Good morning, everyone. Hate to break up the conversations. I know we're all glad to see one another in the new year, and we're glad to see all of you. So this meeting, this Wednesday, January 5th, 2022, regular meeting of the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. If you will please join me in a few moments of silence. And now if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we move on, I'd like to recognize a couple of folks who are in the audience today. Former Mayor Bob Mueller is with us today. Welcome, Bob. Nice to have you. Former Commissioner John Ratzenberger is here with us this morning, and welcome, John. Nice to see you as well. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I will note that the presentation from the Dare County Motorsports Charity will be moved to the February agenda and that Fire Lieutenant Zadd is not present this morning. Other than that, a motion to approve the agenda would be in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us then to recognitions, and I will call on Chief Webster.
Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. We'd like to recognize two of our officers for their achievement through the Criminal Justice Education Training Standards Commission Law Enforcement Officers Professional Certificate Program. That's a mouthful. These officers are Master Police Officer Joseph Mitchell, if you would come on up, J.C., and Master Police Officer Daniel Harris. Master Police Officer J.C. Mitchell started with NAGS Head Police Department in 2016 and currently holds the status of Master Police Officer. He achieved this position through our Career Progression Program. J.C. has worked as a patrol officer and as a K-9 handler with his partner, K-9 Amy. Master Police Officer Danny Harris began his career with NAGS Head Police Department in August 2017. Danny serves in uniform patrol and carries the additional responsibility of field training officer. Danny has also risen to Master Police Officer through the department's Career Progression Program. Both officers have achieved the Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. This award requires officers to meet certain requirements. For one thing, they have to earn their intermediate law enforcement certificate plus additional education, training, and years of experience to acquire the advanced certificate. Obtaining the advanced certificate is not easy and requires officers to proactively seek advanced training and education. Both of these officers deserve to be praised for their efforts and the example they set for their fellow officers. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you, gentlemen. One of the things we are very proud of in NAGS Head is our extremely professional police force, and I know that that takes a lot of effort, individual effort and corporate effort. And we really appreciate the effort that everyone puts in to set these high standards and achieve these goals. So thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is an appreciation for Annette Ratzenberger, who is retiring from the Fireman's Relief Fund Board. And I would like to call on former Mayor Bob Mueller, who is also a member of the board.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity. It has been my honor and privilege to serve with Annette Ratzenberger on the NAGS Head Fireman's Relief Fund Board for the last 10 years. This is going to sound like a kind of a third grade report card, but you know, a lot of the values that you pick up in the third grade that are taught in the third grade are important. Annette's always prepared, always in good humor, always ready to study an issue and do the hard work that it takes to find the best solution, always ready to smile and always there whenever a question or an issue at any time of day, ready to pitch in and do the work that needs to be done. It's hard to understate Annette's impact on our department, on the firefighters, past, present, and future. Annette has led the effort to provide every benefit available through the Relief Fund under statute. Just to give you a sense of what the fund has provided during her time on the board under her leadership, that includes $110,000 in retirement benefits, nearly $85,000 in scholarships, nearly $35,000 in direct payments to indigent, mostly former members of the board. And last year, we were able to purchase cancer insurance for the entire department. I'll speak more about that in a minute. That cost a little over $14,000. I know you all add it up in your heads, and you've got about $600 shy of a quarter million dollars in benefits to firefighters and their families in the last 10 years. But the numbers don't reflect the personal impact of those dollars. We helped an indigent firefighter in his last days pay his medical bills and go to rest, get free and worry-free. The scholarship program has produced teachers and nurses, even a lawyer. We had two firefighters, full-time firefighters, who received bachelor's degrees with financial support from the division while they were working full-time. This spring, we'll see two more young dependents graduate, one to go on and teach, the other to go on and get a graduate degree in social work. Find myself here. Last year with Annette's help, we were able to provide cancer insurance, as I mentioned. Those of you who don't realize it, firefighters are at a much higher risk for a variety of cancers than the average population. And now with our support, in the unthinkable event that one of our firefighters is stricken, there will be additional financial support to help the family and the firefighter through that difficult time. Annette served as our treasurer. That means she got me somehow get over to Carolyn's office and get a second signature on every check that we wrote. She tracked the money, balanced the books, and worked with staff to get every report out on time and accurately done, which is crucially important because if we don't get those reports, we don't get the money that we are due from the state. And that worked very hard at that. But the Relief Fund is not the only way that Annette has served the town. Back in 2005, Annette joined me as a member of the Beach Nourishment Financial Planning Committee, which developed the first plans for Beach Nourishment in the town. She was appointed to the Artwork Selection Committee in 2006. She was a Board of Adjustments member, both an alternate and a regular member. And most recently, she served on the sanitation recycling committee to try and work on solid waste issues in the town and try and resolve and find a good plan. In each one of those appointments, she brought the same wisdom, the same work ethic, and the same smiling personality that she brought to the Relief Fund Board. On a personal note, it is very difficult for me and Annette to envision the Relief Fund Board without you sitting there or an email away. On behalf of the department, on behalf of all the trustees who served with you, and on behalf of the town, who has benefited enormously from your service, thank you for everything that you have done for us. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with you. Thank you. Mayor?
Annette, I'm going to invite you forward in a minute, but I want to thank Bob for all of those good words about someone who's truly been a servant to the town and provided so much valuable service. And I thank you for enumerating those things. Someone who serves and expresses care for those who care for us, those folks who are in the fire service, who put their lives at risk every day, as Bob noted, in particular with high risk of cancer, and someone who dedicates their time to caring for them and their families and their dependents, that's a very special kind of service, and for that we are especially appreciative to you. And before we invite you up for a presentation, I'd like to ask any other members of the board if they would like to say anything or offer any words of thanks to Annette. While you're thinking, one other thing I will tell you I've learned about Annette over the last few years is she has a wicked and wonderful sense of humor, which she expresses beautifully on social media, which I enjoy very, very much. So thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Annette, just thank you for your service, your years of service. You left a lasting impression on the Fireman's Relief Fund and for the members of the fire department. For that, we are all grateful for. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Bob.
I think it shows what a great town that we have, that we have citizens like that that care so much about the town and are willing to donate their time and their services.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ratzenberger, for everything you've done. It's going to be tough to fill your shoes in all those areas. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'd like to invite Annette and the board forward, and former Mayor Mueller to join us.
Good morning.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
So what do you give someone as a small token of their service? We talked about various kinds of things today, get some money back, you know, something else. But we thought it was absolutely worth it. For your kitchen? We checked what kind of dishes you today, which is a break on the river, and says, "With sincere appreciation for your dedicated service and commitment to NAGS Head Fire and Rescue with the fire in your heart, also grateful." Thank you very much. Everyone in the room. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bob.
The next item on our agenda is the NAGS Head Woods Annual Report, for which we will
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and Town Staff. Appreciate you letting me speak this morning. It's been a while.
Yes.
Basically, I'm going to follow kind of up what I've already sent to you in your package in the PDF format, and I'll just kind of go through that. If at any point you have any questions about what I'm talking about or more details, or if there's something at the end of this you'd like to know about the preserve that's not in my thing, just feel free to ask. And if on one of these slides you want to get more details, just please let me know. I'll go through it, and I'll try to answer the questions the best I can. I'll just start off with this first slide because this is kind of new. We've been working in NAGS Head Woods to kind of bring everything together. As you know, the preserve's been there for a long time, and in that process, we've had different signs and different emblems. And so we've been working to kind of have a symbol that represents NAGS Head Woods so when people are in the woods or in the trails, they can kind of key in on that stuff. So this is our new logo that we just came up with, working through. And what we did was we actually looked at some relic designs that we had and old stuff like that, and then tried to modernize it. And I think it captures it well. It shows, you know, you've got the mix of the forest, the dunes, and the water in this. And, you know, that's what NAGS Head Woods, with topography and vegetation and water, it's really, it all comes together. So this is hopefully going to start showing up as we're fundraising now on all of our new trail signs and trailheads and when you enter the preserve and things like that. So I hope to have some funding to kind of take care of that in the next couple of years and really bring it all together and tie it all together and give it some outdated signs that are just kind of, don't really kind of give the feel for. So as we all have been dealing with, we've been dealing with COVID and the pandemic, and under that situation, none of these different things, we still have tried to give the preserve an open feel and tried to work with the visitors as best we can. As most of you know, our office has been closed due to the small proximity with office and staff being in there. I do man the office. I am in the office, but it isn't currently open to visitors due to the situation. But we have, in most cases, we've updated certain things. We did kind of add to social media things. We did actually make an email account that can be directly tied to NAGS Head Woods so that myself and Jennifer Gilbert, who works with me in that preserve and deals with it, we constantly get emails about anything coming up. I have made my cellphone more available to the public and things of that nature so that if we have issues and someone can't find a door, we can get to some and rapidly answer questions. We've also tried to work through Google Business, TripAdvisor, and all those things to make sure that everything they have is current and up to date, which is, we've realized it's very interesting, social media and all these different things rapidly change things or grab whatever they can. So making sure that they have the correct numbers and even trail guides and things like that has been an interesting thing. Right before, right as around COVID came up, we actually were really trying to understand the amount of visitors that we were getting. And these numbers just reflect 2021 and during that fiscal year, 1 through 6, when I put the report out there. So we have laser counters. If you can see in that picture, it's just a small little camouflage box. Basically, it counts every time a person passes through that count. So when they count through that, you get a laser count, you get a one, you get a two, a three, a four, and so forth. So we now have those on all the trails, and so that's starting to give us real-time data. We did run some samples and try, and it was really interesting to see because you can actually look at this by hours and different things like that. And we did notice that once it gets dark, you don't really have any numbers, so we're not counting animals and things like that. And some of these trails, there is a there and back, so we are counting people twice in some cases and things like that. But looking at it from an annual thing, typically, we would tell the town based on our reports when people are writing the books, we're getting, 10,000 visitors will sign in our books a year. Well, as you can see, just in the six months, we're looking at about 40,000. So we're averaging looks between anywhere from 60,000 to 80,000 visitors that are in the woods, hiking these trails, which is quite a bit more than we had always told the town. And really, this has been the best way for us to really count it. So it's really showing us the activity in trail. Now, granted, in the two years we've been doing this, has been during COVID, so we are seeing increase in outdoor activity. NAGS Head Woods being one of those places that's free to the public and open to the public, we know that that has also been a cause. But in general, in the 20 years that I've been here, we have seen an increase in visitors in NAGS Head Woods in general, and so this has just been a really great way to count it. The other thing that I think is really neat is it used to have some kind of like dieback and stuff like this. I don't know if any of you spent any time during the holidays in NAGS Head Woods, but it was very, very busy. That was very little time that parking lots. Now, granted, the weather was spectacular at 60 degrees, so hiking, but it just shows that that place is now, you know, although it is a hidden gem, it is not as hidden as it used to be. And people are really enjoying it and spending time on these trails, and we're seeing families in all ages of size going on this stuff. What I also think is really nice is that you also see the ADA trail is getting lots of use from trailer strollers to handicap use to people that maybe don't feel as comfortable being in a closed environment. Woods, these trails allow for people to feel and get outside more. And so that's been great, particularly in the last two years when getting a little fresh air and getting outside of houses has been very critical to people's happiness. Maybe I'm pushing it? Sorry about that. And so this just breaks it down in pie charts. And what's kind of neat about this really is that you see the days of the weeks and things like that. You may not be able to see the numbers very well, but Saturday is at 19%, Sunday's 17%, and then most of the week is around 12% to 13%. So it's pretty even breakdown of how people are using this and things like that. And then you have comparison down site also, sorry. The green and yellow one is days of the week and the other color one are just the different trails. And the trail use, as we suspected, our most active trail or the one that has the highest is the colors that kind of green and orange or green and brown, that bottom corner, that's our Discovery Trail and our Roanoke Trail, and that's getting between 19% and 21%. That is a dog-friendly trail. That is a trail that connects you all the way through the woods and to the water's edge. So we know that that one is getting. It's also the trail that we have our audio tour on and things like that, so it does offer and provide a lot more for visitors thing. But in general, it's used just as much by locals because people like to get to that water as they get through the forest, and it's a great place to, you know, to either see the sunset or just visually be out there. But on average, all the other trails are between 11% and 15%. The town trail, just for example, let me make sure I get it right. Yeah, so the town trail is about 13.8%, and that's the one that comes off the Barn Street Park, goes all the way down to the sound and stuff like that. One of the other things that's not on this, but we just put it into effect, and it's really telling, and we'll have some information coming up, we just installed it about a month or so ago, is we also bought a laser counter for the road. So it's a little bit different. It's got a little bit different sensitivity and stuff like that, but we really want to start, I really want to start looking at the activity on the road. We suspect that it's being used a lot more than we thought, and I think it's going to be telling. Right now, we have it located just on, right before you get to the entrance of the thing, so it's on Ocean Acres. But I hope to also, after we do it there for a while, move it to Old NAGS Head Woods Road in both the north and south end and chart to help to have some idea of numbers with that so I can start to work with both towns. And thinking about that road and the use it gets, you know, this will just be counting vehicles. And if you spend any time back there, there's also a lot of people that bike it. There's also a lot of people that run it. And it's also a place where people like to walk their dogs. There's a lot of people that I meet that maybe don't like that closed, narrow, three-foot trail, but that six-foot road, that eight-foot road, something like that. And so I really want to try to understand the use of that road and then maybe how we can work to make sure that it's a safe environment for everyone. And so we can also make sure, as been working with, you know, the police and firefighters and all that stuff, we deal with different situations back there, to make sure that we can all have a good, safe environment. And that may require vegetation management, that may require different other types of issues that are on that road. But I think right now, if we get an idea of what the numbers look like, that'll help us all make some better decisions. Sometimes, you know, the data can really just help decide how that road's being used and then what we need to do with it or how we can manage it best. So that's another thing that's coming up. That's not in this data, but I just wanted to kind of let you guys know that we're working on that. This is, this right here is just screenshots from what we have. It's called OneCell. So if you've been on the town, if you've been on the Roanoke Trail or anything like that, it is an audio tour. You can use a QR or you can do an actual call-in. So one is reflective of the numbers of using the QR code, which is on the right-hand side, I think, if I could see it right. And then on the left-hand side is just the call-in. So whether your phone can do the QR code or you call it, or you can actually call in from home later. So you can actually call in these things and make a phone call. It doesn't matter where you're at, and you can actually listen to the audio tour. So a few years back, you may remember that we, there is a book out there when we were all neighbors that the conservancy worked with back in the early 80s to try to get information about people that lived there, families that lived there. And within this, we actually, I had discovered old tapes of these interviews. And so we digitized them, and now we have them. And so for each location you go to has an audio tour of someone talking about either the family living back there or some experience they had when they were a kid back there. And so these are just call-ins. These are the numbers that you're seeing of people, unique visitors, this thing. So like, you're looking at 1,000 calls or 400 in different locations, total time and average length of time. So we try to keep them short so that you could, so that it's something you could listen to on the trail, you wouldn't be sitting in there for too long. We also do have some overspeak on them to try to get them. The biggest thing we're working on now with this is, so one, we did it, we did change some of this stuff to have a Spanish thing with this, so if you had Spanish, you listen to it. The other thing we noticed is the audio, the old audio stuff from the family things are not as crisp and clear as we'd like, so they're kind of hard to hear, particularly if you're in outdoor environment and trying to cellphone with speakers armed. We found if you have a headset, it's much clearer. And so we're actually looking in to see if someone can actually maybe reduce some of the background noise and bring that voice up clear so that people can really hear what they're saying. Because I think it's a unique thing, and it is really clean. If you haven't used this, this idea we actually found over there at the gardens over there in Roanoke Island, they actually have a similar thing like that. And so we've gotten some good feedback from this. We definitely are seeing use of numbers like this, and this is actually, we're getting ready to try to do a different audio tour that will deal more with the ecology and maritime forest. We're going to try an example on the Discovery Trail first, which ties into the Roanoke Trail. And then if that works out well and we get something, we're actually thinking about actually coming over to the town trail and then doing one through the town trail, which will kind of do, what we want to have it do is kind of talk about from the front of that dune to the sound, so it would kind of be a seat of sound thing, which you may have recalled, sorry about that. Ronna Paris has done this with fifth-grade classes, and we want to kind of bring that thing so that whether you're a visitor or someone who lives here, you can start to kind of understand the maritime forest, and as you walk through it, maybe you'll learn something or see something you didn't quite see before and get some experience. So we're hoping to bring this on, because I think audio things are really nice for people and can be a good way to keep and refresh stuff and make things new. Oh, sorry. So we're doing, we've been doing facility improvements. One of the things that we're working on, and hopefully we'll actually have them up and running, is electric vehicle charging stations. We've been working with Rivian on this, and Rivian and the Nature Conservancy have been trying to get charging stations in what they would call like unusual places or places outside of the norm. And so we are a test site. We're trying to get that stuff. They're not active right now. We don't have the appropriate charging heads for them. We have a test charging heads and make sure they can do them. And so I'm supposed to actually be getting new charging heads this Friday. We'll see if that comes in. Everything's been a little delayed, and we hope at some point that people will be able to go in there and do kind of a waypoint thing, so if they have an electric charging thing, they can do the credit card thing and charge their car while they're in there. We have them in two parking spots right now, but we have signs that will be out there too that will say, "First come, first served." We're not just directing them to charging. We have limited parking. We have 19 spots, so it will be something that we can offer when they're available to electric vehicles, but they won't be designated strictly to electric vehicles because we just don't have the space. But we do think it'd be nice to at least be able to offer some of these services to the public if someone's back in there. So since the preserve office has been closed, I've been doing some renovation in the area. One, because the building is old, 84, it needs some renovation. And two, we've been adding some extra type of things for security during COVID, doors, doing heating, cooling, different types of things like that. And, you know, this is just the front office. This is, on the left is when we ripped out the floors and did all the walls, and then on the right now is the new thing. We have a new visitors' desk, information area, a new thing, and then behind that would lead to our office, and there is a door that's set in there to separate our back offices from the visiting area and things like that, so we kind of accommodate that. Also, on the outside, we had a few old doors in the facility that were very leaky, were safety concerns, literally had, most of them had been tried to be pried open or broken. So we removed old doors, we redid walls, we tried to keep the similar look to it with the white cedar on the outside, and so we installed some windows and tried to get a better flow. And also, this also helps us just providing better heating and cooling, not releasing so much air into those areas. So this is just a couple of the facility, things like that. We've redone our roofs. We've looked at all of our plumbing situations, all these different types of things that go with facilities, particularly stuff that, you know, from 84. Even though we've been closed, we try to make this thing so once the facilities are back open, they'll be a little more user-friendly. The bathrooms have been redone, things like that have been trying to upgrade, so. And partnership volunteering community. So even So even though we've been kind of closed, the thing, we've still been, we've still been working and we've had a couple of young volunteers on the left-hand side. The young man right there is from First Flight High School. We worked with him last year and he came out and helped us do stewardship activities and things like that. And the young lady on the right-hand side was with Coastal Studies Institute and she also was out and about with us, working on stewardship. They had both field type experience, which could have been anywhere from trail maintenance to helping with the laser counters, invasive species, all the different stuff that goes on with stewardship. And then most of them had kind of like a virtual or written part of aspect so they could also get some stuff, either working or helping with learning about management plans and things like that. Most of, both, but the young man and the young lady both have desires to work in the field of biology, ecology. And so we try to give them both the experience of what we kind of deal with from a preserve aspect and also just try to answer and be there for them as mentors. And then in the same sense, we get a lot out of them, having an extra set of hands in a preserve like this is grateful. And so we were very appreciative. We've looking at actually have another Coastal Studies Institute intern coming up this spring. We had one this past fall and the young man, Aaron Jones, actually reached out to us while he's home for spring break to ask if he can do anything around the preserve. So it's, it's, it's nice to be able to work with the kids in this area and also to have the universities here and work with them. I gained knowledge from them. They're getting new classes, they're learning new things. So it's nice to have that type of youth out there to be thinking about it. And it's also good for us to try to give back to them and hopefully we can keep those desires and things going in, in the science field and outs up so that they can continue to have them coming into the new field as some of us get older. And we're open to, the preserve's been open, left-hand side, a couple of sisters that use the ADA hiking trail on a regular basis to get out and about. And it's just nice to, to be able to offer these things. I have come to really love our, our ADA trail. It, it does require a lot more maintenance because of all the wood and stuff like that. And, but it's nice to see people using it. It does get used, does provide people the outdoor facility to have nature around them and a safe environment where they can walk and stuff like that. You know, we have a, a lot of variety with our trails and I think they provide a lot of services, but if you've walked in any of them, the ups and downs, the roots and stuff like that aren't the greatest of places and for, for people that have to keep their eye on the ground sometimes. So it's been nice to see that. On the right hand, right inside, you see Rhonda Parrish. Actually, she is doing a virtual tour. So during parts of time of COVID, when classes couldn't get out there or wouldn't be able to do it in a quiet environment, she actually offered a virtual tour where she walked that town trail and gave stuff, was able to record stuff and then offer that thing. And so that actually was offered and actually picked up and provided outside of the county. And so other people used it. And so that was a, a great way for Outer Banks to kind of reach a whole nother group of class and stuff like that. And if you've ever had a chance to spend any time with Rhonda Parrish in the woods or out and about, she's a great educator. She knows how to explain it in all different levels and she enjoys it. And so we enjoy working with her. She's also the lady that we've been working with to try to come up with that audio trail that will happen on the discovery trail. So it's, so. Our conservation management biology, as you all know, you know, the preserve is a managed preserve. It does require hands-armed maintenance and invasive species. We've really got into invasive species a lot this year. Russian olive has unfortunately shown up quite a bit on the back of that truck. That's just a half a day's work of, of Russian olives pulling them out from small thing. We did, dealt with English ivy, Japanese silk grass and Oriental bittersweet are the four main ones that we kind of grapple with, within the preserve. These are all things that can spread pretty easily from clippings, from yard debris coming in, from seeds being carried in by birds. Or, you know, you can even get, you know, anything from seeds and tires and all this other stuff. A lot of this stuff does initially show up along the roadside and stuff like that or in the power lines, but these are areas where sunlight is, it gets into a lot easier. It can be a little more disturbed so they can turn things up. If that's not uncommon, that's not a, that's just the way it is. Also, you know, one of the places where are more visible. So when you're, you can drive that road, you can see stuff. And we do try, we do try to manage these and keep these back. You know, people always ask, are you going to be able to eradicate them? Eradication's really hard to eradicate these things, but what we're trying to do is keep them at bay, try to make sure that they don't take a hold of a place and start to, you know, we start to lose some of the desirable species, some of the native species in the area and things like that. But what's going on with that? Oh, sorry, keep doing that. We upgraded, so let's, I'll start with the deer hunting. We, the past year, twenty twenty-one, we had about thirty-five participants, about six hundred hours within the bow hunting program. They harvested about four deer. We're just getting, we're starting to get our surveys back, but just to give you ideas for this year, we had about forty-three registered hunters. I suspect the hours will be anywhere between six hundred and a thousand, which is about what they average are. And we do, we on average, we're averaging somewhere between two and six deer a year from this thing. If you spend any time in the woods, you do see a lot of sign of deer. You don't necessarily see a lot of deer sometimes within the woods. It's a hard place to hunt, but we continually get participants, we continually get a lot of local guys that want to participate in the bow hunting. So it does provide that service. And it does provide a stewardship aspect to have those extra eyes in the woods and, and they are allowed to be off trails and into areas that I may not get to all the time. So to have them calling and contacting me if they see a problem can be really nice too as well. So they do also provide an extra set of eyes and ears around the preserve, which I think is great. And they enjoy having the woods open for hunting like this. So I appreciate their services and that thing as well. And then we update our animal species. We've documented some, a couple few birds that really weren't seen in the woods, so we made sure we had that. Over the time, we've been doing some research and different things. So we identified a couple of rep, we, a couple of reptile amphibians. So we made sure those were added on to our thing that we hadn't documented before. And then things like that were expected, like bobcats and things like that. We now have documentation through our video cameras and things like that as being in there year-round. And so we added those type of things to make sure our species list are as up-to-date and correct as possible. And this is just one of the, the great things about having cameras out in the woods. We had a bear spend in twenty twenty, spent the longer than normal period of time. Normally bears are here for maybe a month or two and you sporadically get here or have signs of this. This bear spent, he spent most of the summer and until October in the woods. And we captured him on this particular camera area many, many times. So it was kind of neat to see him. We didn't, we never actually had any reports of sightings by visitors, but we knew he was there. Scat and things like that were, were prevalent and definitely, he definitely seemed to pass this camera quite a few times. So I wanted to share that with you as well because it's, it's nice to see that a blackberry can hang out in the woods and you can have forty-two thousand visitors walking through and never see it. So I don't do that every time. That's my presentation for today. I hope you enjoyed it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now. If you have any questions later, I'm happy to answer. If you want to get out in the woods and take a hike with me, I'm happy to do that with you at any time.
Thank you. I have one question. What's the current thinking on the sometimes called Yellow House or Goat Man's House?
Yeah, so we had discussed prior to the COVID thing about trying to remove that house. I'd be happy to work on removing that. I was at one point going to have a group of volunteers help to remove it and I still would, I still think it's a safety concern. I still would like to get it down to some level of safety. And, and to me, quite honestly, it doesn't provide the town or the conservancy for any purpose at this point, besides it's just the Yellow House and people know of the Yellow House. So I would like to remove it. It's something that we, I need to get back to. It's been very hard to get a group of volunteers together under COVID and under our guidelines and things like that, but I'm hoping to do that. And I, like I said, I had told a couple of years ago that I'd be willing to work with volunteers to start removing it. And I think the town at the time said they would be willing to offer a dump container back there if I worked on that. So I do have a couple of really good volunteers that have really stepped up in the, in this last year and I think they would be key to helping me in doing that stuff. So I'd, I'd be happy to revisit that and, and take care of that. I think, I think it needs to happen. I know it does have some desire from, from certain people within the community and all that stuff and I understand that, but if you've spent any time around it at this point, it's, it's a safety concern. It's only a matter of time before I feel unfortunately someone gets hurt.
Yep. Mike, Nathan?
You accomplished a whole lot in a year.
Yes.
Good management on that, that sound, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that.
It's a place that I love, it's a place a lot of people love. So it's very, very easy to work back there when you love something.
Yeah.
The renovations really looked, looked nice.
Thank you.
Just a couple of points. And then the audio for the, I didn't realize that, that was, was available back there. That's certainly nice. And then Ms. Parrish you spoke of, she is certainly passionate about her work. And then interesting to hear that, said that she reached out to people in Canada, Georgia, Illinois, South Carolina and Minnesota. I know you said outside Dare County, but that is, that's special. One question, actually maybe two questions. The deer management, what, as far as numbers over the last sixty-eight years, sixty to ten years, what numbers are you seeing? Is it a decline? Some people believe it's because of the coyotes.
So that's a, so that's a good point. So I kind of use, so I kind of use the hunters' data to try to, to try to, I'll, I'll use the hunters' data to try to answer this because the hunters turn in surveys of what they see and what they, and what they don't see. And that's, it's just pretty much anecdotal. I mean, we're just talking about presence, absence at this point. You know, like I said, you see lots of signs of deer in here. There, there was a time, a handful of years ago back, that seemed like the deer were just not as prevalent in the woods. That was a time, and my number's going to go off, but it's going to be like four or five years at present, about the time right before you guys actually started doing coyote pervasion type thing. And then I know that Jimmy Pierce with the police department is very adamant about getting in there. And I think you guys did do some trapping. It felt like that during, prior to that, my hunters were saying they were hearing more coyotes, seeing more coyotes, seeing less deer activity. Deer didn't seem to be acting the same way. That was what I had from a couple hunters that had literally hunted in that place since they were kids. Since coyotes have been starting to be managed more, I have seen, I have gotten data that they're seeing more deer. Other than that, I could tell you that I have one hunter that's done quite well of getting beautiful bucks out of there. So he's happy. I think, you know, there's an ebb and flow with that type of stuff. You get, as you see of anything with rabbits and you, then you see rabbit numbers go high and then foxes go high and then rabbit numbers go down. I think there's, I, I do think the coyotes maybe either did pressure by pushing deer around, maybe making them harder to be thing. They may have played a, a thing with the fawns. I don't have any numbers to show that the coyotes were taking fawns. I just, you know, there is that correlation between those type of things that could happen. I've also, you know, when it comes to hunters and stuff like that, I haven't, I have some hunters and, and that have spent a lot of time in the woods, but haven't during the last couple of years, haven't had the time to do it. They're just, lifestyle has changed, families, whatever, they're not in there. And then I've got new hunters are spending more time. And so I kind of use the guys that spend a lot of time in the woods to really get the information from. And I think the more you spend the time in the woods, you see, you see more deer. You get a better way of understanding with the way the movement. But I've never been able to tell you, is there a hundred deer from this woods or not? I think it's, I think since I started here, we saw, we seemed like we saw more deer or, or the health of deer was different than what it is now due to the fact that there's just a lot of changes. You know, there's some places where the pinch points, they maybe don't travel as much anymore. You know, before, and I started here, there wasn't First Flight High School. They could leave the airport and come through a lot of that stuff a lot quicker. I don't know how much those deer moved through there. There's a lot of, I have more questions than I have answers for you, to be quite honest. What I can say is I don't see predation or vegetation like a browse line that would be really high from, from overly, for having too many deer. I don't see a lot of deer in the daytime, you know, in, in areas. So generally when you're seeing deer all over the place or maybe, now this may be different. Town may be actually hearing that they're having deer problems in people's yards. I don't get that information. And deer don't need to travel very far if food and water and everything is really close by. So if they're getting everything they need from a neighborhood, they may not be going into the woods as far, except during, you know, the rut, when everything's getting pushed around. So I mean, there's those type of things too. I mean, I don't know how many people have feeders in their yards adjacent to the woods and things like that. If that type of activity is going on, they can be offset with that type of food source. So I know that doesn't answer your question, but there's, there's a lot of things that can, that can be happening within this woods and stuff like that. I guess at the end of the day, I'm still getting forty hunters coming in, I'm still getting a lot of, a handful of the same guys coming. They enjoy hunting the woods, they see deer. Some of the same guys, every year that harvest deer, always harvest deer out of the woods. So it's providing that service. And I'm also not seeing a loss of vegetation from over browsing or a high, high deer population or, or, you know, seeing roadkill. Or the other thing that you sometimes maybe find is we're not seeing sick deer and things like that that occur. So at least from that perspective, from my angle, if I'm not finding sick deer near water sources, we're not hearing about a lot of problems outside of the woods with deer, we're not seeing a lot of roadkill from deer, things like that. We know we have deer and we know that hunters are taking a few deer and they are seeing some deer, so.
You made note in here that, that only deer and coyotes allowed to be hunted. Are you seeing any coyotes that have been taken?
Usually I will get a hunter or two that takes a coyote. I don't get, I don't, I don't have hunters taking a lot. I mean, when they're putting, I'll be honest, when they're putting time probably in the woods and sitting there with a bow, they're hoping a deer comes through versus dealing with a coyote. But I think every now and then, yes, a hunter will and, and that may be just because he's, he's got a good situation. And then they know that they, that the, keeping those numbers in check is, is vitable to having healthy deer herds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, my brother was in town for a little while, a little positive feedback and he, he really enjoyed the audio tour. He went back there when I was at work one day and stumbled upon it by himself and really enjoyed that. So I think it's great that you're looking to add some more trails to the audio tour. That was really good. And I think on that road, yeah, you will see a lot more. I know I'm one of those guys that run the road a lot or used to. Now I bike the road a lot, see a lot of locals back there when I'm doing it. So what are the plans there if you, if you see a lot of activity back there?
I, I don't have any plans. I just know that like right now, I think having some numbers to understand that, we already know that there's foot traffic that uses it. And I'm, I'm not counting foot traffic because I'm not going to, I'm at, these laser counters probably will not pick that up. They pick up, they're at a different sensitivity level to pick up vehicles. I'm just looking at vehicle use. And if I have an idea what vehicles, I think it would just be nice to be able to sit down with the town and say, look, we're having whatever the average is or yearly or stuff like that. What do we want to do? Like I think, you know, when I think about it, we, I don't know that we want to have a, of road get wider and wider. That's just going to speed up traffic. But I do think that there's, I think looking at safety issues maybe in pinpoint turns where maybe we've got to just say, okay, I, I know that we've kind of, and I've been proactive in trying to not make sure we reduce too much vegetation on the roadside. But I think there may be some places where we have to consider managing turn areas, or places where people come around in cars, and there is runners and bikers that they can't see. My thing would be safety. Once again, we, I've not gotten a lot of phone calls of anyone getting hurt back in there, but, you know, the more that something gets used, as we all know, there's, the more opportunity for things to happen. I just want to make sure that, that everyone that uses that road has a good, enjoys the woods, and has a safe thing, and gets that stuff. The other thing I'll tell you that is very interesting to me, and, and this is just a change of times, is a lot of people running and biking, everyone does it, I carry one, headsets in. You can get up on someone in a vehicle at fifteen miles an hour, and they'll never hear you. And I'm driving slow, someone coming around a corner, and you have headset in at forty miles an hour, there's, that's, that gravel and slide, it's just a slide reaction. And I, I don't, I don't know, nothing I can do about that, but I think at least that there's hairpin turns or something like that, where a vehicle and/or a runner or biker can get and see further, then everyone has a chance to be safer. That's kind of, and I, but I don't know what that looks like, but I do think it needs to be looked at. I do think having numbers and trying to think about that, it's because my wife runs the town trail, and then runs the road all the way to Ocean Acre and back. And so, I always tell her, "Put one butt in, please do not, I don't want," you know? But, you know, that's, that's the kind of thing. And that's no different than what the towns are dealing with on the beach road, and trying to get bicycle paths, and, you know, the same type of thing. You get a bicycle path, and then yet unfortunately some places, you know, go underwater half the time, because it's a low-line area, like, and that's, and then people run out towards the road, like, it's the same type of thing. Like, how do we get, how do we look at that road and make it safe, take out vegetation where we need to, so you're not having to, the runner doesn't have to go around a big bush, and then he's right in the middle of the road. And so, I'm trying to think about it the same way, because it's, it's got multi-use, right? If it was just the vehicle going through, we'd be thinking about it completely different. If it was just trying to make sure a fire truck got in there, it'd be completely different, but I'm not at this point. And I know that's not the issue, and I need to, I need to try to look at the numbers, and then I need to try to work with both towns to think about it, because you guys have a planning board, and there's probably someone that has better ideas than I do. Because when I think about stuff, I think about hiking trails and trying to make people feel comfortable in the woods, safe in the woods, but still not have it so open that they don't feel like they're not in the woods.
Yeah, and to your point, the only time I've ever had a little trouble is on a bike on one of those hairpin turns, because some of those, in the summertime, it is kind of hard to see around them. And yeah, yeah, your car comes up, and, or lady pushing a baby stroller, and yeah.
It's just whatever, you know, it's just, I'm just trying to think about it all. And you're not going, we're unfortunately, you know, as you guys all know, sitting there, you try to think about everything, and there's always one thing you didn't think about.
No, I think you're doing a great job. It's a beautiful place, a great asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate your report this morning.
All right, you guys have a beautiful day.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. Call Mr. Whitey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every month, the Board of Commissioners welcomes the public to provide comment on any matters that people are interested in addressing to the board. This is an opportunity to address concerns or comments to the whole board. It's not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to these comments. But if anybody wishes to provide comments, if you will please approach the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your comments to the whole board, and I will let you know when your five minutes is almost up. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? If not, Mr. Mayor, we can close the public comment session.
Great. Thank you very much. Next item on our, on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
Say, maybe a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I should have said aye. Sorry, that was unanimous. Then the next item on the agenda is Item F, Reports and Recommendations from the Planning Board and Planning and Development Director, and, so we'll call him Planning Director Wyatt.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Pull this up so we can kind of run through it. I'll go through quickly, and then if there's anything that you would like me to spend more time on, just let me know. This is just a little rundown and highlight of the things that have been going on within the Planning Department. First thing I'll touch on briefly is that we do intend to get the stormwater management revisions back before you in February. At this point, we want to meet with the Outer Banks Home Builders Association prior to the Planning Board meeting in January. We'll get a formal recommendation at that time, and then go ahead and hopefully get this to you for public hearing at your February second meeting. So that's our intent right now. The second thing that I wanted to highlight quickly is that December ninth, we did have a Board of Adjustment meeting. It was for flood variance. Flood variances are pretty rare that we get those, and even more rare that they would be approved. But this one was. And I won't go into a whole lot of detail about the variance itself, only what you need to know to understand the end result, which is, the applicant for this flood variance was a gentleman with a disability that will progressively decline. He has a three-story home, and there's only sections of that home that he can navigate with his disability. So he's very dependent on an elevator to get from floor to floor. He is going to be spending more time here. This, it's currently a second home, it could become their primary home. And he wanted to have a small bedroom, ADA bedroom and bath, for him and his caretaker on the ground floor, should there be a power outage, maintenance, something of that nature, where he couldn't navigate the other fours. So, his property is at 100 C Spray Court, and with our 2006 flood maps, this property was in an AE nine. And it's important to note that his property, I don't know, it was at 9.16 or something like that. With our new flood maps, it is now in an X zone. And with our local elevation standard, RFPE, because this property is east of NC 12, it is now in a VE velocity zone 12. So he couldn't do what he had requested to do, and that's why he went before the board. What came out at that time was, let's see if I can zoom in on this just a little bit. Here's a GIS rendering, and this little red property is the gentleman's property. What we realized was a little, very unique actually, is that right now, we regulate the LES, the Local Elevation Standard, directionally, east or west of NC 12. And it did not account for this section of NC 12 where the road was relocated and moved, and we have a pretty significant curve here. So what was said is, up and down the beach, NC 12 is parallel with the beach, except in this location, where we, we pull it in closer to 158. Had the road stayed linear, this property, as well as other properties, would not be considered east of NC 12, would not be located in a VE 12, would rather be regulated under the LES of an AE nine. So, in this particular situation, he was being regulated in such a way that would prevent him from making the improvements he needed, strictly because of this jog in the road. There were several findings of fact that led to this flood variance being granted, but the peculiarity of this was one of them. And so, as part of that conversation, we thought that it might be helpful to bring this to the board's attention. And we don't need direction today unless you're prepared to give it, but this might be something that you would like to ask staff to look into, and possibly consider an amendment to our flood damage prevention ordinance, where we talk about the LES being designated directionally, east or west, and do something more graphically, where it's more consistent with the other areas.
Kelly, if I can interrupt you, I, I think, I'm glad that this, one, I'm glad that the Board of Adjustment made that finding and that decision. And, you know, this had not occurred to any of us, I don't think, in the, in the process of adopting that ordinance. And it, it did strike me as unfair when I saw it, that, you know, that these folks, by just that alignment, are being regulated to a much higher standard. And I, I don't know what the rest of the board feels. I, it seems simple to me to rectify, you know?
I think you staff is knowledgeable enough to come up with an ordinance or modification to that and bring it back to us next month.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Yeah, I see, I think by acclamation, yeah, I would like to see that. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. With regard to Planning Board, their December 14th meeting, they had a couple items there. They did review tree removal within the SED 80, which this board will hear a little later on. We did a sketch plan review for Blue Moon Restaurant, got an update on the Coastal Communities Resiliency Program. And then, the one other thing that I wanted to highlight here, is we did have a conversation about the use of shipping containers as principal dwellings within the town. Currently, our code speaks to the fact that a use, unless a use is expressly prohibited, it is permitted. We do not expressly prohibit shipping containers as single-family dwellings. We only address them with regard to accessory structures post-storm. So, brought this to the Planning Board to see if they had an interest in initiating a text amendment. They did, they did go ahead and initiate the text amendment, so staff can begin putting a little bit more time and energy into researching the pros and cons, and the things that will be of interest of the board. Thus far, we know that the North Carolina Building Code does allow them as single-family dwellings. They just have to be engineered to the extent that they're meeting the Energy Code and other codes. So it's a process of engineering, and it can be rather expensive, but it can be done. The concern from the zoning standpoint is we are unable to regulate appearance and aesthetics for single-family dwellings. So there would be no mechanism that we could apply architectural design to someone interested in doing a shipping container as a home. We do currently have someone who is interested in developing a single-family dwelling, or possibly even a duplex, through the use of shipping containers. So I wanted to just bring that to your attention, that's, that's out there. And again, don't need direction at this point, but I wanted that on your radar. So, moving on down through here, our decentralized wastewater management plan, the advisory committee met on December 16th. It was a very productive meeting. We're getting down towards the end, we're trying to wrap this up in a couple of months. So we're going to have to increase the timing of our meetings a little bit. So we actually have two meetings coming up in January, January 13th and January 20th. The Estrein Shoreline Advisory Committee, they met for the first time on December 15th. We had a great presentation from Reed Corbett, from CSI, a lot of participation from the committee. You can access all of that from the project page, which is linked here in your report. Everything else is pretty standard. I would note that we are done with events at Doughty Park for the time being, and we hope to have the Art and Culture Committee before you in March for an update. So that's all I have for the Director's Report. I appreciate your guidance on the, on the flood mapping, and if you have any questions, I'll try to address them.
No, I don't see any. Thanks for the heads up on the shipping containers. I, I think they're going to find it so hard to meet the building code there. I've looked at that, and looked at that, and looked at that, believe me. It's, it's not easy. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Then you will continue, I guess, with the, the next item.
Sure. I know we have a time specific here, and I don't think this will take very long at all. There we go. Okay, so this is a request for removal of trees within the SED 80 zoning district. This board has to take action for the removal of trees that are 16 inches or greater in caliber. The request is being made at 452 West Villa Dunes Drive, and this is the property for Webb and Dory Fuller, and Dory is in the audience with us today. Currently, there's a single-family dwelling on the property. This is before you today, because they would like to construct an accessory structure on the, on the south side of their property. They, in doing so, they do need to remove several trees, but at the same time that they're coming before you for removal of trees in the footprint of this accessory structure, they've also identified other trees that are on the perimeter of the principal structure, the accessway and the septic area, that they would like to remove. In total, there's 23 trees that they would like to remove. Only 12 of those trees are greater than 16 inches in caliber. We've reviewed this request a couple times in the SED 80 district, so I won't go through the land use conservation and all the regulations that apply to it. Essentially, like I noted, this board would need to approve any removal of trees greater than 16 inches in caliber. If it's associated with construction, they would want to know that there's no other location on the site that is more suitable, that would save more trees, or be, generally be more suitable. So, having reviewed this, staff believes that they have located the accessory structure in a suitable location, given the existing conditions on site. And we would recommend approval of the 12 subject trees that are 16 inches in caliber or greater. I'll pull up the site plan for you quickly. There's one of these 16-inch caliber trees that's on the property line, and it turns out the tree's actually on the adjoining neighbor, which is Ralph Buxton. So Ralph has provided a letter that states he's comfortable and okay with the removal of that tree, if the board is inclined to grant that approval. Let's see here, okay. So here's, here's the plan. It's pretty straightforward. Here's the proposed accessory structure, the proposed pool. You've only got two trees here being removed that are 16 inches in caliber or greater. There's a couple trees here that are under 16 inches. As you'll note, the other trees that have been identified are within a 10-foot perimeter of the principal structure, the accessway, or the septic area. And again, this would be, this would be the tree that is actually straddling the property line, and we have the authorization from the neighbor. So, I can answer any questions that you have, and like I noted, Dory is available if you have questions of the applicant.
Kelly, just one question. Can you confirm that most of these trees are pine trees and gum trees?
Um, yeah, so our staff has gone out there and taken some photographs. The majority are pine and gum, yes.
Thank you. Kelly?
Motion.
No, for most, yep.
Make a motion to approve as recommended. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as recommended. Any discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. We now have a time-specific item for 10:00 AM, and that would be Item H1, which is a presentation of the annual audit report. And I believe I saw Lisa here? Yes. So I'll call it on Lisa Murphy, please.
So my name is Lisa Murphy, and I'm with Johnson, Mizell, Straub &amp; Murphy, and I'm here to present the June 30, 2021 audit results. This year, the town received, received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance that we as auditors provide. This opinion confirms that the town's financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And our letter, the opinion is on our letter, which starts in the financial statement of the, the report. The town actually goes above and beyond normal reporting requirements for preparing their annual audit report. They actually prepare a comprehensive annual financial report, which is, or a CAFER, which provides additional information throughout the report, as well as statistical and historical information that would help the user to identify trends that have happened in the town. The town has been awarded a certificate of achievement by the Governmental Finance Officers' Association, which is the GFOA, for the last five years, and was awarded one last year. We've now submitted this report, and it hasn't yet gone through the process, but we expect that it will also receive the certificate of achievement. So, the report, as it's laid out, and it starts with the introductory section, which is the section that kind of introduces the reader to the town and all the, the activities for which the town does. It starts with a transmittal letter that is written by Andy and Amy, and it also shows where they received their certificate of achievement. The next part is the financial section, and this is where you would find our independent auditor's report and our opinion on page two. After that is the management discussion and analysis report, which is also prepared by Andy and Amy. This report is made to be user-friendly and allow the reader to understand how the report is laid out, and the financial highlights of the, the current year, as well as economic factors for the upcoming year concludes the report. I encourage anyone looking at this to read this. I think it's very beneficial to help with understanding how the report is laid out. So, in the financial section, there is the basic financial statements. So these basic financial statements start off with a statement of net position, which it shows the financial standing of the town as a whole. It's similar to a balance sheet, or in the private sector, as it is done on a full accrual basis, and it shows both short-term and long-term. And it shows both short-term and long-term spending focus. The net position is arrived at by taking your assets plus your deferred outflows of resources, minus your liabilities, minus your deferred inflows of resources, and then you are left with what the net position of the town is. The net position is broken into three different components. You have your net investment and capital assets, which are the investment that the town has made in their capital assets, less their depreciation, less any related debt that has allowed them to purchase those in capital assets, and any additional unspent bond funds. This is the largest portion of the net position and is basically non-spendable resources because it are capital in nature. After that are the restricted portions of the net position. These are resources that are restricted and how they need to be spent. And last is the unrestricted, which is available for the town to meet their obligations. So, the town ended the June 30, 2021 with a net position of $61,287,593. Of that, $41,293 was their net investment in capital assets, leaving the remainder that is restricted as well as the unrestricted. The unrestricted is 14% of the total amount. So, that is the net position, which shows the results of the town as of June 30, 2021. The next statement is the Statement of Activities, which is similar to the profit and loss for a private sector entity. It's unusual in that it starts with the expenses. The expenses are reduced by program revenues, which are basically revenues that were derived by programs that are included in the expenses and include charges for services, operating grants and contributions, and capital grants and contributions. So, then we come over after we've subtracted all those revenues against our expenses, and we come up with our net expense of revenue and expenses. You'll notice that the majority of the town's revenues are down in the bottom of the statement, and it is comprised of their taxes, which are the property taxes, municipal service district taxes, occupancy tax, land tax, transfer taxes, sales taxes, and other taxes. So, we ended the year with a change in our net position of a decrease of $2,670,687. And we take the net position from the beginning of the year and decrease it by that amount, and we come up with the net position that is shown on Exhibit 1. Following this is Exhibit 3. These are the fund, government fund statements. These are done on the modified accrual basis, which means that it's the short-term focus of spending. And so, it starts with the balance sheet, which has your assets minus your liabilities, minus your deferred inflows of resources, and it comes up with your fund balances. Your fund balances are broken down into five different components. You have your non-spendables, which are inventories and prepaid. Your restricted, which are similar to the ones that were shown on Exhibit 1. Your committed, your assigned, and then your unassigned. So, this year, our unassigned was $8,185,984, which is 35% of our current year general fund expenditures. The board has a minimum fund balance policy, which, where they strive to have this amount to be 50% or, but a minimum of $5 million. And this is at 39%, which is, you know, similar to an increase over the prior year, but still below the 50%. So, on the next statement, I mean, the next page of this exhibit is where we have the reconciliation that goes from the modified accrual to the full accrual. And that, and it kind of shows the difference between what's shown on Exhibit 1 and 2 and the other ones that are on the modified accrual. And the biggest difference is our capital assets, our pension deferrals, and liabilities, and expenses, as well as our debt. So, those long-term debt, those things are not shown on these statements. And this brings it back to reconcile to the Exhibit 1. The next statement is, the next exhibit is Exhibit 4. This is where we're showing the revenues, less the expenditures, plus or minus the other financing sources and uses for the government funds. And this shows that we actually had an increase in our fund balance by $1,937,500. And once again, it is followed by a reconciliation that goes from the increase and arrives to the change of, the decrease and the change in net position. So, basically, picking up the long-term items created a decrease. The following is the general fund statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance with the budget to the actual. This statement is similar to the previous one, except that it now shows the budget. And it shows the budget as it was originally adopted and as it was finalized, adopted, as it ended up at the end of the year. And this is so that the reader can theoretically kind of tell what changed between the year as to what was planned, as to what came in as final. At the bottom of this exhibit is where we actually see our capital reserve fund, which is used to accumulate funds for our capital projects, but it is rolled up into the general fund in these statements. And the capital project fund balance was $5,882,37. And our ending fund balance was $19,815,156. So, after Exhibit 5, we start with Exhibit 6 through 8. And these are exhibits that show our proprietary funds, which comprise of our water fund and other, well, the NAGS Head Leasing Fund and the Water Capital Projects Fund. These statements are done and have always been done on the full accrual basis. And it shows a, it shows similar to Exhibit 1, and it comes down to the net position of your proprietary funds, which was $9,094,045. And our unrestricted portion of that was $4,039,632. So, Exhibit 7 is Proprietary Fund Statement of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Fund Net Position. It shows down at the bottom of this statement that the change in net position was a decrease of $186,871, ending with the same net position that's shown on Exhibit 6. Exhibit 8 is a cash flow statement. And this is something that most people are somewhat familiar with. And it shows the change in the cash for the year. And in the middle of the page, it shows that we have a net increase in cash and cash equivalents of $1,207,187. So, these particular exhibits that I've outlined are more of a summarized information that is shown in the back in more detail. So, following these exhibits is the notes to the financial statements. This is where you'll find much more information regarding the numbers that we just briefly highlighted. The first note is the summary of significant accounting policies. And this just basically tells more general information with, less with numbers about the policies of the town. And then, beginning on Page 42, we have detailed notes on all the funds. And this is where you'll get more into your backup of the numbers that are shown in the exhibits and the fund statements. So, after the notes to the financial statements are our required supplementary information, which is information that's required to be shown in regards to our pension liability and our law enforcement pension liability and our other post-employment benefits liability information. Following that are more detail, where we go into the different funds that you have and the information that is summarized in the front in more detail, broken down by departments. And they all tie into the exhibits that I previously went through. So, after that are supplementary schedules. And the schedule that we have here is an analysis of our ad valorem tax receivables. And the town finished the year with a collection rate of 99.954%, which is outstanding. It actually is an increase over the prior year by a small amount. Following that is the statistical section. And then, after that is the compliance section. So, we also did a, as part of our audit, we looked at the internal control structure. And while we did not form an opinion on it, we did find that there were, we did not find any significant deficiencies or weaknesses that we needed to disclose. So, that is a report with no findings. I'd like to state that I think the town has finished the year through, you know, a much challenging year with a strong financial position, which is, you know, shown by your net position, your unrestricted component of your net position, and your fund balance. So, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Bob, any questions?
Sounds good to me.
Michael.
No, I wanted to thank Amy and the staff, and of course, you guys for, you know, double-checking, but for all their hard work in keeping us on point.
Because Amy and her staff actually prepared all the information that is included in this. And doing the CAFER is a whole lot of additional information that is required. And so, the fact that they're receiving that certificate of achievement is very, is very hard to get and is something that the town should be proud of.
And we are. Thank you very much. Appreciate your report this morning. I think it's probably time for the board to take a short recess. So, we will be in recess for about 10 minutes. Thank you. All right, the board has returned to session. And before we leave, that was time-specific. But before we leave that, also under H1 was the presentation of the, Amy was going to speak to the PAFER that we just received and that we've had a, had a chance to look at. So, sorry to have jumped around here a little bit on you. Amy.
Thank you. Good morning, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to sort of bring to your attention and to the attention of staff and anybody interested in learning about our financial position or what we've done over the past year. In lieu of an annual report, the past few years, we've done a popular annual financial report or a PAFER. We submit the PAFER to the GFOA that Lisa talked about. And last year, we were one of 510 governments in the country that received an award for the PAFER. It was our fourth year in a row. We have submitted this PAFER to the GFOA as well. You cannot submit a PAFER to the GFOA without submitting a CAFER to the, sorry, I should back up. The annual report used to be called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It is now called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And it is now called the ACFER. So, after 20-some years, I have to beat that into my head. So, I'll call it the ACFER. You cannot receive an award for the PAFER without receiving an award for the ACFER. So, like I said, we were one of 510 governments that received that award. And I wanted to point out that the PAFER is not audited. It is taken from the financial statements. We want to point out that if you do want to learn more in-depth about the financial statements, the information's there. And it points you to the ACFER. I think the PAFER is a really important part of the strategic plan as far as the communication piece. I think it's really helpful for staff so we kind of all know what's going on. It also gives a lot of kudos to what we have done, and we should be really proud of what we've accomplished. And a lot of departments have worked together and collaborated to make these things happen. It's important for external communication because it is meant to be easily readable and accessible to anybody. You don't have to have a financial background. It's non-technical. We use a lot of pictures, and we've had some beautiful pictures in there this year that really displays the beauty of the town of NAGS Head. It's easily digestible. We do use the pictures. We use illustrative graphics that help kind of display, visualize financial trends, if you will. And really, that's about it. The board has paper copies. It's on Facebook. It's on our website. We want to distribute it to as many places as we can. That's part of the requirements because we want to be very transparent. And we want just this to be an opportunity for everybody to kind of reflect on what we've done over the past years and be really proud of our town and our staff. And we have a lot more to do next year, too. So, thank you, and thanks for everybody that helped put it together, too. It was not a one-man show, that's for sure. It took a lot of work.
Thanks, Amy. I know that, and please express thanks to all the staff for us. A lot does go into that, and it's obvious. And it's always a very nice readable document. And it appears to be this year also a nice document. And I do, as you did, commend it to the public, anybody who's interested in NAGS Head. And that extra level of transparency of translating things into common speech, I think speaks well for our town.
Thank you.
Great job, Amy.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, then, will be Item G1. And I'll call on Eric Clausen, please.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This is based upon the, our last meeting, our last first-of-the-month meeting, which was on December 1st. We were asked to look at revising and paring down the ordinance. Again, the ordinance on the use of different types of vehicles on public rights away. Again, this is just to try to keep our pedestrians and users of the multi-use path as well as the right-of-way, keep those folks safe when they're using any of the town facilities. So, we've broken this down into three definitions, which was presented the last time. So, we have the muscle-powered vehicles, the electric assist, as well as the low-speed motorized. The only thing that really changed with this, and a modification was made last night based upon some feedback from the police department. On the low-speed motorized vehicle, in the initial packet that went out, it talked about 30 miles an hour or less, which is exempt from registration pursuant to General Statute 20-5114. We've struck in that, out of that definition, and replace that with registered or unregistered. So, again, we want to be comprehensive when we're talking about the low-speed motorized. So, it accounts for both those that are registered as well as those that are unregistered. So, as we get into the meat of Section 42-92, again, this is, the title of the ordinance is being proposed to be changed to the operation of non-motorized, muscle-powered, electric assist, and low-powered motorized, low-powered motorized vehicles and devices. As you look at the subsections, so this has been pared down considerably, as you can tell from the last time it was presented. The matrix is gone. It just has the four subsections right now. The first one speaks to the non-motorized as well as... The first one speaks to the non-motorized as well as the electrical assist. It basically allows for those vehicles to be driven or operated or ridden upon on public rights away, virtually any public right-of-way, including the multi-use paths, sidewalks, streets and other public areas. But it needs to be done so in a safe manner. So it's not reckless or faster than is reasonably proper or in a manner that endangers life limb or property of the rider or any, any other person. So that essentially just talks about those two vehicular types. The subsection B talks about that it shall be unlawful for the low-speed motorized vehicles or devices, registered or unregistered, to be on the multi-use path or on the sidewalk sections. Again, to try to keep those pedestrians safe, those visiting the area. It also speaks to, it shall be unlawful to operate an unregistered motor, low-speed motorized device on any public street. And then also speaks to, as to the reflection that you see in subsection A, that if you do have a registered low-speed motorized vehicle, that that shall be done in a safe manner and to not endanger the life limb, property of a rider or any other person. Subsection C was a piece of the code that was existing before where it allowed official town vehicles to be, to be located on the multi-use path while performing official town duties. And then subsection D talks about low-speed motorized and electric vehicles must be operated in accordance of all applicable state and local ordinances. So based upon the last conversation, we revised this. We sent this to police department and both police chief as well as deputy police chief have, have both approved of the language and feel like this is enforceable or, and/or reflected on current practices. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Sears?
Reading it and listening to you, can you confirm that no golf cart, registered or unregistered, is allowed on the bike path?
That's correct.
Okay. Just it's simplified, which I appreciate. And I guess I don't need to call them up because you said that they're okay with it as well?
Yes.
Okay. Bob?
The electric bikes, now where are they allowed? They're not allowed there?
Basically, the electric bicycles, the electric-assist bicycles are allowed virtually on any, any town right-of-way, but it must be done so, must be ridden on in a safe manner. So they would be allowed on the multi-use path.
They would be allowed on the multi-use.
But they, yeah, they, they must be done so in a, in a safe manner, not reckless and at a speed that's, that's reasonable for the, for the path itself.
And that is to be determined by the judgment of the officer?
Correct.
Okay. And that's enough legal terms to, for them to be able to enforce what they need to enforce?
And, and I'd welcome them to, to respond to that, but I believe that that's the current practice right now. So if, if they're seeing something that's deemed unsafe or reckless, they are stopping somebody and, and at least notifying them of their activities.
Good. All right, well, thank you.
To approve this ordinance?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance as wrote, written.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you for working to simplify that and, and make that clear. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda, item G2, is consideration of a change order to the old Nags Head Cove project. And Andy?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. David Ryan could not be here with us today, so presenting this item, I give all credit to David for working on this project. I think he's handled this in a very, very professional manner, not only technically, but also his dealings with the neighborhood since we last spoke in December when the board approved the base bid amount of one point three million. David has been working with the contractor as well as the neighborhood to refine the scope of the project to minimize impacts from this on neighbors and yards and, and infrastructure. He's worked with the contractor to come up with two primary changes to the project. The first would incorporate some additional sections of horizontal directional drill into the project. As you know, the, the base bid amount included open cut in the majority of the areas of the project. David has gone into the neighborhood and identified where there's significant vegetation or private or public infrastructure that would be impacted by an open cut project. And he's proposed four locations for horizontal directional drill. These would be along Sandpiper Terrace, along a portion of Roanoke Way, and along a portion of Blue Marlin. David has met with Dave Masters, Jr. and Brenda Lowe with the neighborhood to discuss these. And I think that they both agree that these are the, the right areas to, to do this. He's also sent letters to, to every resident in the neighborhood that would be adjacent to the project to let them know about it. And we also have a virtual meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening to go through the project with the neighborhood. Beyond the horizontal directional drill sections, the original base bid included a cut through each driveway of approximately thirty inches in width. We feel like a better method to, to deal with this is to replace approximately ten-foot section of the apron so that you don't have essentially a scrap section of apron being replaced. And so everywhere where we're not doing horizontal directional drill, we would propose to do an average ten-foot apron replacement, essentially back to the first expansion joint. So each property has a nice clean apron when the project is done. With that said, this is a fairly significant increase in cost, but still within, for the most part, within our budget that we originally envisioned. The change order amount is four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars and nine hundred, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy cents. We mentioned in the staff report that the original project budget was a little over one point seven million. We did receive more ARP funds, American Rescue Plan funds, than we had anticipated. We had suggested using the ARP funds for this project since it's a very clean use of the, the money. We would recommend using the additional funds that we received for the project. And we also need to have a contingency for the project. So we're asking for a budget amendment to go along with this, to approve essentially money for the contingency and the additional ARP funds. So I think with that said, the, the budget amendment amount is, let's see. One hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then the, the contingency we would add to the project would be roughly fifty thousand dollars. And the total change order amount that we would be approving would be four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy cents. So essentially, two actions are required for, by the board today if the board agrees with this. One would be to authorize the town manager to execute the construction change order in the amount just, just mentioned. And then the second action would be to approve the budget amendment in the amount just mentioned.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Before we move to a motion, I appreciate the, the work that David has done to be in contact with the neighborhood. I want to ask Commissioner Sears, too. I know you've been active talking to neighbors in that area and kind of following the project. And how do, what is your sense of the way things are right?
Well, I think the inclusion of Mr. Masters is going to help this project go smooth, much smoother than without him. He has a good knowledge of that project. He is speaking to the board members as well as other neighbors. He's probably even given some insight to David on that in my discussions with David. So it's a major infrastructure project, one of probably many in the near future that we're going to have to do. And, you know, how this comes about is going to set the tone for those next projects. I would ask or request of the town manager and the engineer that next time, instead of rushing to approve the base budget, that maybe we do all this additional work. One more month wouldn't have caused much, but it did cause a little more questions when it came about. So just to be a little more, you know, ready for this vote, I guess, is what I would request. But I think that with David on board, working with Dave Masters, I think this is probably going to be pretty smooth.
Okay. All right, very good. Given that, is there anybody willing to make a motion so we can have discussion on the, the two items? Remember, there's a, needs to be a motion to approve the change order and then a separate motion to approve the budget amendment.
Do you need it in that order?
Uh, no, I do not.
I just have the budget in that picture.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Make a motion that we approve budget amendment number seven in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that, approving the budget amendment? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And then the next would be approval of the change order.
Authorizing.
Authorizing the town manager to execute the change order, which is in the amount of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy cent.
I second your motion.
Okay, that will be a motion for me. Then Carolyn with a second from, from Mayor Pro Tem Sears. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. I, I echo Mayor Pro Tem Sears' remarks, but I am also believe that we are doing a good job with this very significant project. Really appreciate the communication part of this in particular. And, and Commissioner Sears is right that this does kind of set the tone for some big things we have coming down the road. So, so doing this right is, is important.
Well, it's a bit of a learning lesson for us. We bid this project three different ways and we didn't, we didn't know what to expect in terms of the, the pretty drastic differential between the horizontal directional drill and the open cut. And so once we, we learned what the bid amounts were, we sort of reacted from there. And the reason we, we split this up, we wanted to go ahead and allow the contractor to start placing orders for materials because there's a lead time on that. So we felt like bringing that first piece in December would, would be beneficial for the contractor just to get the materials ordered and knowing that we would have this for you now. I think next time we'll have a better picture and, on how we're going to bid this out and we'll, we'll include some of this in the, in the base bid.
Oh, and getting those material orders is important because all those prices are all over the place and stuff's going up every day. All right, thank you then. You're going to stay there and do another piece of David's business, which is the beach nourishment project.
I know David's been providing the board with updates on this. You know, we, we were looking to have this done sooner. As you know, we were waiting on a permit that had been held up by a federal court decision. Since the, since the last meeting, actually, the, the day of the last meeting, we found out that that permit was issued. That was the four oh one water quality certification. That had to be issued before the other permits could proceed. According to David, we should have our KAMA major permit within the next week. And then, as he, he mentioned to you before, we expect the court permit to follow that about three to four weeks behind. And so that's on the schedule that we anticipated. So I think that'll, that paves the way for us to go ahead and approve the, the construction, the notice of award to the contractor for the project. So that's essentially what David has put together for you today. He is asking for the board to approve three specific things. The first would be to approve the issuance of the notice of award to Great Lakes Dredge and Dock in the amount of eleven million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ten cents. And that would include the base bid, part of the, the add alternate number two, as well as sand fencing and springing. The, David is also asking for the board to approve an amendment to the beach nourishment capital project ordinance. And finally, to authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract for the amount just mentioned. So those are the three items for you today.
Okay, all right, thank you. You can, we can have some discussion in advance. I think, I think we're all pretty much up to speed and have been expecting these formalities to come along at, at some point. So let's have a motion on one of these items. Let's start with the notice of award.
Make a motion that we approve the issuance of the notice of award to Great Lakes Dredge and Dock Company, LLC in the amount of eleven million, five ninety-eight, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ten cents.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Then the next item would be that capital project ordinance amendment number three.
What's that amount, Mayor?
That is fourteen million, two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Make a motion that we approve that, the amount of fourteen million, two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Yeah. Is there a second? I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And the last is to authorize the town manager to enter into contract for this project.
Make a motion that we authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract with Great Lakes, Flakes, Dredge and Dock, amount of eleven million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ten cents.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Yes, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, that's been a long time coming together. Glad to see that. Very good. That brings us back to new business again. We covered item one previously. So that would bring us to committee reports from board members. Item H2, Commissioner Sears, anything to report? Have you attended your first?
Friday's orientation.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much. Kevin? Okay, all right, good. Bob?
The Estuary Shoreline Committee, yeah. It's a very exciting project. And it first came about from a couple citizens that came to the town worried about the shoreline on the sound and how to stabilize it. And everybody knows what we're doing on the beach. So the town took a look at this with the VA, with the VCAP project and decided to put it into their comprehensive plan. And they were able to secure a grant of seventy-five thousand dollars from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. And then we've got Dr. Reed Corbett, as Kelly mentioned, working on it from the CSI. And it's a pretty cutting edge as they're looking at the fetch and actually doing a survey of the bottom of the sound to determine whether, what living shoreline will work And that was at the first meeting and the second meeting's next month. It's a very exciting project and the town's looking at this.
Yeah, yeah, we were, we were excited about that and that we can start tackling the other side of the, other side of the town. Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item H3, which are committee appointments. And, excuse me, I don't have those open. But we have the Board of Adjustment. We have a position at the, excuse me. Back up. All right, so first, we will kind of take these one at a time. The first is appointment or reappointment to the Board of Adjustment. Margaret Suppler's term expires on February the sixth, twenty twenty-two, and she has indicated that she would like to be considered for reappointment.
I make a motion to reappoint Margaret Suppler to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. The next would be the annual appointment of the chair and vice chair to the Board of Adjustment. And we have, in fact, reappointed Margaret Suppler, and so she as chair and Bobby Gentry as vice chair are interested in being reappointed, and if that's the board's will, a motion would be in order.
To move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reappoint Margaret Suppler as chair and Bobby Gentry as vice chair. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Next item is appointment or reappointment to the planning board. Mead Gwen's term expires January the 2nd, 2022, and he has indicated that he would like to be considered for reappointment. If it's the board's will, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mead Gwen to the planning board.
Okay, thank, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And the last is to appoint someone to replace Annette Ratzenberger, who we recognized earlier in the meeting due to her resignation. Ann Farmer has completed application on file and has indicated her interest in serving, so.
Has she followed up with her, sir, recently?
Uh, I'm going to ask staff if they have, I have not.
Her application was January 30th of 19, just, has anyone, is she still interested in this?
She is, we checked with her.
Good. Okay.
Make a motion then that we appoint Ann Farmer to the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees.
Very good, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Thank you for that question, and thanks staff for the, having contacted her. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And as we have discussed before, we encourage staff to continue to advertise these, the interest in having people serve on various boards of the, of the town, and, and deepening air pools in, in that regard. The next item on our agenda is consideration of the traffic control map amendment, a no parking tollway zone on Pond Island. Andy, are you going to cover that, or Chief Webster? Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, thanks again. Coming before you today, asking for consideration for an update to the traffic map and establishing the no parking tollway zone on South North Shore Road. Police and Public Works Departments recommend the institution of a no parking tollway zone at this location, which is 7813 South North Shore Road. The property owner at 7813, and/or her representative contacted us and brought to our attention of a perceived safety issue at this corner. That road is eighteen feet wide, and then there's a right of way that butts the town bulkhead. They, they felt that it was a safe, unsafe, and created unnecessary congestion in the area. But while we investigated the complaint, we noted that although this right of way is narrow, that, that it does a but on the town bulkhead at this location. Beyond the stated traffic safety issue, the police and public works departments observed that parking the vehicles on this property could negatively impact the integrity of the bulkhead. So it is for those reasons, the safety concern of the property owner, but I believe more so the impact to our bulkhead, that we are recommending the implementation of a no parking tollway zone at this location.
Chief Webster, can you tell me how many people park on that?
Um, I don't have, I don't have any exact numbers, Commissioner. I don't, Eric, did you have any sort of numbers?
I believe, I believe there was. I believe there was communication made to some of the neighboring properties, and there are occasionally people that do park in that area. As far as like a hard number, as far as the traffic count, we don't have that, that data. But there are people that park on that, on that particular section.
It's my understanding, I rode out there yesterday and took, took a look at it, and it seemed to me, by knowledge of bulkheads and high, highbacks and stuff, it seemed to me that there would be enough room for a vehicle to safely park there. And I think you did it, you went and did another inspection yesterday. Can you tell us about that, please?
Yeah, we, so I pulled, I pulled my vehicle, which was the, the town, the town issued F-150, pulled that off the side of the road. I was probably within four to five feet of the edge of the bulkhead. You know, in that particular case, I'm cognizant of, of what I'm looking for there and able to safely pull that off. If there, if there was somebody with, say, a boat, they were towing some kind of larger vehicle, and they had a bigger vehicle than that F-150, that would, that would put them closer to that bulkhead than what we would probably feel comfortable with it, with them parking, with, which could be within a couple of feet. So not only do you have that, the weight of that vehicle right there, but you also potentially have a passenger exiting that vehicle on that side where that bulkhead exists.
And then just two follow-ups. One, we have not received complaints that there are issues with parking there. Is that safe to say? I mean, has the police department received calls about vehicles that are parked there that in an unsafe position?
Not at all.
And then the second one, what conversations has we had with people in the community, and whether, you got one property owner, I understand that's requesting this, what other conversations has been had with the other people that may utilize that area if there are driveway floods, not from sound water, but from rainwater like it was yesterday when I saw a driveway? What conversations have we had with the neighbors?
I've not had a conversation with the neighbors.
I did, I did speak with one of the neighbors, so if you, well, it's a neighbor to the east of the property that had requested this. They, they're a husband and wife that live back there. They did mention that a lot of the houses back there are rentals now, that some of the people that live there have moved. People do use this area occasionally to watch the sunset, occasionally to watch the fireworks, and you'll have an occasional fisherman that parks there to, to use the bulkhead, well, to fish off the bulkhead. But they didn't feel like this was a significant issue, that people are able to access that area, and it, it does provide sort of an amenity for the community back there. So, you know, the real question is, do we feel like it, it poses a risk to our infrastructure? Just speaking with that one property owner, I think that they sort of favored not placing the restriction as opposed to placing the restriction. That's just one property owner, we could certainly reach out to others back there, perhaps that's something we should do, so we're happy to do that if the board wishes us to do that.
Um, I, I have a, a question, and I, I'm wondering about different mechanisms, because we, we've done a lot of no, no parking shoulders here lately, and I don't want us to get too, I'm concerned that that becomes a really ready tool for, for situations that may or may not really necessitate that. I'm wondering in that, in that bulkhead area if, if we decided not to put no parking signs there, recognizing the, some risk, adding posts to that bulkhead with reflectors, or the, sort of the caution bars, or something that might just sort of signal people that there's an, there is an edge there as a possibility?
I don't know the concern, I don't know if the concern was them driving over it as much as parking on, I mean, it's town, it's town property, I don't see why. If somebody wants to pull onto a public town street and admire the view, let them pull on a public street and admire the view. They're not hindering traffic, there's been no complaints from anybody, to my knowledge. It's a unique community, it's one, you know, entrance in, one entrance out, it's not a through fair. I, I don't understand why we're changing the traffic map for that.
Okay. All right, so I've heard reservations from a, from a couple of board members about doing this, and perhaps for any further discussion, it's time that we would give, have a motion as to what we want to do with the side.
I'll put something out, just for discussion purposes, make a motion that we deny the request to amend the traffic control map until a time when there can be evidence that it's, does create a safety issue with parking.
Okay, thank you, is there a second to that?
I'll focus it.
Okay, got a motion and a second on that.
No.
Um. So I, you know, in the absence of a lot of, you know, in, in some of these other situations, we, we do have a more vocal group other than, other than perhaps one property owner when we've, when we've done this kind of thing, and so I, I, I think I'm probably in favor of the motion as it's been made, to sort of wait, take a, take a wait and see approach on this. I do note that there are some tiny slivers of private property, sort of on either end of this, and I, neither of those appears to be big enough for anybody to actually be parking on anybody's private property. That would be pretty difficult, so I don't, I don't think that, I observe that, but I don't think that's really an issue.
And if we hear from, say, staff investigates more, and there's other property owners that they see a need, or that the police department again, receiving complaints, particularly and certainly revisiting, I just think it's premature at this time to create this.
Good, okay, good, appreciate that expression of your, your reasoning on that as well. Any further discussion then?
Is it doing any damage to the bulkhead itself?
I didn't observe any at this time.
Did you see anything?
No.
Okay, very good, all right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to deny the request to amend the traffic map. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Again, as, as Commissioner Brinkley indicated, if that situation changes and there's additional information, don't hesitate to bring it back to us.
Yes, sir, we'll report back, thank you.
Thank you again.
The next item on our agenda is H5, consideration of a COVID policy related to leave time for vacations.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm here today to ask for your consideration and approval for a vaccine incentive for our town and MAGA's head team members. So we're seeing an increase in cases, COVID positive cases in Dare County, and we think providing an incentive will encourage our team members to receive their booster shots. Both, you know, the benefits are twofold, one, it keeps our workplace safer, and two, it does not disrupt the continuity in our operations. So our current policy provides four hours of vacation leave once individuals complete their initial series of vaccinations, and what we're proposing is to provide an additional four hours of vacation leave once they receive their booster shots. So I believe you have the policy draft in your packet, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, all right, very good. Start on this end, Bob, any questions?
Not at this time, maybe.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brinkley.
This would be retroactive to those employees or team members that have already received their vaccinations, just not going forward.
That's the intent, but this is just for the booster.
Correct.
And that's the intent, so if you received your booster in December, we would offer this benefit to them.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Sears?
And do you have a count of who has completed both the vaccination to whatever level, and then the booster, and do you have a count in relation to how many employees have been out with COVID or have had COVID?
Sure.
And who's clean, who's not clean, do you have all the good stuff?
Yeah, I'm, I like data, so I'm glad that you're asking that question. So currently, we are tracking those who have received that initial series of vaccinations, and seventy percent of our workforce has received that initial, initial series, which is considered to be fully vaccinated, and that's about eighty individuals in total. We have not been tracking the boosters, and a policy like this would allow us to do so because that's how we're tracking to provide the vacation hours. So I don't have an exact number on the boosters. What I can share with you is that based on the dates that we have from the initial vaccinations, eighty percent of those who have already been fully vaccinated are eligible to receive boosters at this time, so that means that their last dose they received was over five to six months ago. In terms of account, we've started tracking that this year, we have had a number of individuals out just from last weekend this week due to COVID, five to six individuals so far in 2022. So, you know, we're tracking with what we're seeing in Dare County, and it, and it's, we're seeing it as well in the town staff. Sure, so Andy asked to talk a little bit more about the updated CDC guidance that was released at the end of December, and, and that's one of the, the reasons why we're also proposing this policy, is because CDC guidance initially did not require individuals who were fully vaccinated but had been exposed to quarantine and isolate, and now that guidance has changed at the end of December, where if you have not received that initial series within the last six months, you do have to isolate for five days, so that's taking our workforce out of business for five days. Now, if you do receive your booster, you're able to continue to report to work as long as you're masking up.
So have you tracked how many people who have the shots have been sick as well within our workforce?
I don't have that, that data point for you. I can, I can look, though, from the cases this year, that's no problem.
Or the ones non-vaccinated that's been sick?
Yeah, I.
I mean, we are, I understand you got how many percentage you have that are vaccinated, but at what point are all of our employees either vaccinated or have had COVID? Where are we at with that?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers on who has had COVID from last year, but that's something that I, I'm sure I could pull.
Thank you. Any additional questions, or?
I appreciate taking a proactive approach to try to further encourage for us to get the, get the booster as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things where you're, you know, it's in the interest of air safety and keeping people at work, that we want them to go get a shot. It's also a fact that the shot can make you feel pretty bad, feel pretty crappy for about half a day, and, and so I, I, I understand that, trust that employees will use that time to, to, to recover. All right, so then a, a motion to amend the policy would be in order.
Make a motion that we approve the policy as amended.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.
Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for your, your work in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item are items from the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, other than to wish the, the, you and the board and all town staff a happy New Year, and looking forward to continuing to work with y'all into 2022, I have nothing else to present today.
Very good, thank you.
Not this year.
The, the next item would be items referred to and presentations from the town manager. Andy?
So I, I just wanted to give a couple of quick updates on some, some things, and some of this you may have already heard, and a couple of questions might come out of this update. So just running through a list of things that are currently happening. So the board was looking at doing three sidewalk projects this year, one on Bonnet Street east of Wrightsville Avenue, one on Barn Street to connect 158 up with, I believe, Meekins Avenue, and then another sidewalk in the Village along Sea Chase, running back to the entrance to the golf club. That is currently under contract, and we expect that work to start next Monday, and they'll be starting on the Bonnet Street section, then moving over to Barn Street, and then finally finishing up in the Village. And we're looking at about a sixty-day timeframe for that project. Just, I think the board was aware of this, we did execute the reimbursement agreement with NC DOT for the crosswalk light at Sea Chase. We're currently trying to coordinate with DOT on, on the installation of that, and just speaking with Public Works Director Eric Colson, we're hoping to align the installation of that crosswalk with the completion of the sidewalk. So, tracking that in advance of Easter, we're hoping that we can, we can do that well in advance of that holiday week. So beyond that, we also have a beach access currently under construction, Bain Bridge, and so that And just speaking with Public Works Director Eric Colson, we're hoping to align the installation of that crosswalk with the completion of the sidewalk. So tracking that in advance of Easter, we're hoping that we can, we can do that while in advance of that holiday week. So beyond that, we also have a beach access currently under construction, Bain Bridge. And so that beach access is currently closed. We hope, hopefully will have that completed within the next 60 days as well. Currently looking at getting the other beach access, Huron Street, out to bid within the next few weeks and hopefully tracking not too far behind Bain Bridge to get that work The courts at Dowdy Park, the resurfacing has been completed. You were aware that the courts were closed to allow for that. And we were able to restripe a portion of the basketball court with pickleball striping to allow some additional pickleball activity to occur. And we do have a pretty regular user group out there that brings a portable net. And so now they're able to use that area. They were fairly satisfied with, with the work that was done and we did receive a positive note about that. The town has now closed on the purchase of the property at 105 West Sea Chase. And so we did have a meeting with the property owner to kind of go through the lease, or not the, the property owner, but the, the leasing, because we do have a tenant now at that property. And just trying to work through the, the initial meet and greet and some of the business that we have to take care of in managing that lease. Nothing more to really say about that. We did have a meeting yesterday with a group to talk about the Jockeys Ridge State Park Access. We had Superintendent Joy Greenwood, as well as staff and several of the residents back there. A lot was discussed. I would say that one item that I would mention, the, there are two boardwalks back there. One is further to the south. It, it was, it was established as sort of an accessible boardwalk, but it, you walk out to an overlook, it doesn't actually take you down to the beach. That, that boardwalk is in disrepair and we did mention that something needs to be done with that. You know, historically, we have been responsible for the structures that are back there at that access. At this point in time, and, and this was something that the working group talked about, we don't really feel like there's a need to maintain two separate accesses back there or structures. And we've sort of been hesitant to spend money back there, given where we're at with, with the situation back there. But we do think it would be time for, for us to go in in there and remove that, that dilapidated structure. And so I would sort of look for some guidance from the board to, to whether it would be okay for our forces to go in there and look at removing that structure.
Remind me, did we ever receive a formal response from, from the park to our letters?
That was a large part of the discussion yesterday. And what we were told is that we should be receiving a response this week from Kathy Capps, who's the Deputy Director of Operations for North Carolina State Parks. So a lot of the discussion yesterday seemed a little bit premature until we had this letter back from the state. And then that's going to allow the town to better react to what the status of the situation is. I believe what we discussed was, was if we get that letter, putting that on your February agenda for a discussion of what we might do moving forward with state parks and managing that, that facility. So that, that's where that stands. And the commissioners, Commissioner Brinkley and Mayor Pro Tim Sears were at the meeting and, and they could certainly speak to the discussion. I think the, the residents that were there were still somewhat dissatisfied with some of the things that happened this past summer. So once we get that letter back, I would expect we would have some more internal meetings following up with maybe the commissioners and with the state park staff on, on some of the things that, that could be done to mitigate some of the concerns.
Thank you. Sorry. Commissioner Brinkley?
Just one point that I wanted to say to the commissioners. If there's any document, documents that show that we're responsible for the maintenance of those walkways and we've been given information that it is unsafe and in a state of disrepair, at what point should we go ahead and remove that or do we wait for the letter, possible letter that may come or may not come from the deputy director?
Letters, letters due this week, right? I mean, we can wait on that, but it's kind of been a very loose agreement according to what has evolved.
Correct.
We maintain it. We push sand, the state doesn't. We have no authority to do anything else in there past that gate. So, I mean, I'm not disagreeing we shouldn't go remove that structure. We probably put that structure there.
Correct.
But at the same time, we have no authority inside that state, state boundary.
And it was known, usually for companies, that it's my understanding that we were responsible for the maintenance. I thought that's what was the maintenance of?
Originally, but they've taken over so much of the other things we were responsible for. It's a very loose agreement. At one time, frankly, we even, our attorney even suggested we just, yeah, walk ways.
And I understood that, but here that, I agree that we should just wait and hopefully do receive the letter this week.
Yeah. Well, you raised a good question and Commissioner Sears touches on it. So, and I do expect to receive, we, we do expect to receive the letter and that will answer a lot of questions. I'll ask the attorney, in, in the absence, this walkway is on state property. We have no clear agreement in terms of town responsibility for maintenance, as I understand it. So is there, is there in, in your mind, any, any urgency to action on removing the boardwalk that would say, yeah, we need to make a decision today as opposed to next month?
No. No. I mean, unless you were aware of a condition that was imminently dangerous or was a latent defect, meaning a defect in the condition of the premises that a person is not likely to appreciate, like a hidden defect, except in one of those two situations, I don't know that there would be a duty on the town to take any different action.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Sounds like we, we get the letter and then we decide how to move forward.
Okay. The, the only other thing I wanted to mention, so in talking with Commissioner Sanders, he had asked me about this in terms of the status of the skate park. And I do have an update for the board. You know, I believe this goes back to our CIP workshop last year when the board discussed improvements to the skate park and the directive at the time was to determine what it would take to make the facility safe. And as the board knows, we've been there for several years trying to maintain the wooden portion of the skate park and screwing things down and keeping the, the structures intact. You know, there is some rot that's occurring. The wood is becoming very brittle and it's getting harder and harder to maintain what's there in the condition that, that it's in. And I do feel like we're at the point now where the only, the only real path forward is to remove and replace those structures in order to make them safe for any length of time. Because you're, there's essentially nothing to, to screw the, the material to anymore. And at, in recent, in recent months, we've actually been using concrete screws and going through the, the structure into the concrete to secure some of the deck, deck boards. So with that said, last year, the planning department had done a survey of the community to look at the skate park and sort of the, the elements that, that people want to see there. We have that. We got a lot of response to that. We did go out in the month of November, staff met with a local skate park builder, Andy Duck, to cut, to talk about the future of that property. And Andy builds skate parks not only locally but nationally, but he is a local person. He built the Kitty Hawk Skate Park. And he does work with a, a landscape architect that, that does design work for skate parks. And they, they offered to do essentially a, a fairly simple design process for $1,500 that would bring groups together and, and sort of lay out the types of amenities that, that kids might want to see on that western half of the skate park. A lot of the elements, we think, would be very simple because in these, these more recent skate parks, you're seeing a lot of very simple elements, things that are less expensive. So for, for that amount of money, we could, we could do a design process to determine what we could put back there and even phase it if we need to. As the board is aware, we still have a grant from the Visitors Bureau for $30,000 for the skate park and we would like to be able to spend that money. So what staff would essentially be asking for is, is the ability to, to move forward with conducting this design exercise and then bringing something back to the board that would replace some or all of the elements there in, in a different configuration based on what the community wants now. And so that, that is essentially an update on that.
Would we use the grant funding for that $1,500 or would we use other funds?
We, we have funds in the budget currently that we could use. We, we have professional services fees in our budget that we could use to cover that. So we would, we would do that and then we would use that money later for construction. I believe the Visitors Bureau grants are really for construction.
So I'm okay with that.
Yeah. I mean, $1,500 seems like a reasonable amount to spend to get this thing kind of off-center which, and identify what might be done. So I'm, I, I see Commissioner shaking heads. So I, that seems like a good, good exercise.
Okay. And, and we could start working on that soon. And really, you know, if we were interested in, in hiring someone like Andy to build the skate park, you know, we're looking at a year or more to get them, get it on their schedule because these, these people are busy, so.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I have questions about a couple of other things. One is after the storm, what's the condition of the beach for beach driving at this point, do we think?
We, we had closed the beach during the storm. Staff was out checking the beach earlier today and, and they noted it's still fairly narrow in, in various sections. And so I think that the ocean has calmed down. We would, we would expect the beach to be back open tomorrow, but I, I think that's where it stands at this point.
Okay. And the, the only other question I have is the Whalebone Park. Any progress to report on sort of evaluating or, or schedule in terms of what we might be doing to have a look at that park?
That, that is something that we haven't really started on at this point. There has been some discussions with staff and the planning board about Whalebone Park, but that, I think that's a project that we were going to do internally with our, with our staff, staff person Kate Jones to, to lay some things out there. And so that's, that's something that we haven't really done much with yet.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to add?
Yes, sir.
The sidewalk project on Bonnet Street is going to start on the east side of Wrightsville Avenue, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I just hope that the contractor is aware of how busy that intersection is during before school and after school and that it's already, it can get really busy in there and that, hope that he is able to make arrangements as to not further interfere with, with traffic.
God, we'll say something to him about that.
Yeah. That, that whole stretch, east-west stretch of road is surprisingly busy. I mean, for, for where it is, I guess it's people, combination of food line and it being a signalized intersection, I guess, but that's a busy little stretch of roads.
It is.
Odd. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. And we have a request for a closed session, which we'll circle back to, to discuss a personnel matter under the town manager's agenda. That brings us next to the board of commissioners' agenda and the mayor's agenda. And so I'll start down here. Commissioner Sears, anything today?
Yes, sir.
I'll jump in here as well. The, last June, the governor signed an executive order, Executive Order Number 218, titled "Advancing North Carolina's Economic and Clean Energy Future with Offshore Wind." It set certain goals for investment in wind energy and, and expected results. Part of that executive order was the establishment of the North Carolina Task Force for Offshore Wind Economic Resource Strategies, called in short, North Carolina Towers, to provide advice for advancing North Carolina offshore wind energy projects, economic development and job creation. The Secretary of, of Commerce, where they're designated, will chair the task force. I learned in the last couple of weeks that I apparently was appointed to that task force because I was invited to the inaugural meeting. And so that's, that's how I became aware. It was sort of, I guess I got volunteered. So, appreciate that. And so I look forward to serving on that. One other thing that I get to do in two weeks from yesterday, really to rep, and I'm going to represent the town, appreciate the opportunity, is that the ambassador of the Netherlands is hosting a dinner at his residence in Washington DC. It is a, a gathering of mayors to discuss those communities that are, have programs underway to address flooding in their communities. And so I will be attending that dinner and I look forward to.
It's quite an honor.
I look forward to that. It is an honor to the town of Nags Head and appreciate all of the staff work that, that led to that. So. Commissioner Brinkley?
Happy New Year to our staff.
Yes, very much. Commissioner Sanders?
Same.
Right. Great. Thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before the board before we go to the closed session? Hearing none, then I will move that the board go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter in accordance with General Statute 143, 318, Point 11A6.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session. Okay. Thank you. The board is returned to open session. Mr. Leidy, will you report on the closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The board did discuss confidential personnel matters, but no actions were taken and nothing else needs to be reported at this time.
Very good. Thank you. I believe we covered all of the other items before we went into closed session. So a motion to adjourn or recess to the Board of Commissioners workshop on Tuesday, January 25th at 9:00 AM would be in order.
Motion to adjourn to that time.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Thank you.